Five, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 25th. We will go into our public comment. Is there any public comment at this time for items not appearing on today's agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will accept public comment as each item is under consideration. We would look for a motion to approve the March 11th Board of Commissioners meetings, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the March 11th meeting minutes.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried. Under proclamation, we are going to be considering a proclamation to express our sincere and deep gratitude and appreciation for Kathy Alloway's tremendous amount of dedication and commitment to the Schlo Center Region Library over these many, many years. And we will be presenting that to her in some way, shape, or form in the upcoming days. And very heartfelt thank you to Kathy for all the work she's done for young and old here in Center County to experience the joy and wonder of learning and reading and finding out about new things every day. So we would look for a motion to adopt the proclamation. Also welcome any other comments about Kathy's service to our community.
I just want to say we have two great library systems in Center County, both supported directly by the county commissioners and county government. I very much appreciate everything that Kathy has done over the last number of years for the Schlo Center Region Library. I am a pretty active guest and patron of that library, and I've always enjoyed working with Kathy. I'll let Steve make a couple remarks if he'd like, and then I'll approve the proclamation.
Well, I think Kathy's proven great leadership at the library. I think we've seen a lot of growth and expanded programs, and we're very excited to see her move on to the next chapter, as it were, of her life. But it all comes down to hard work and leadership on her part for making Schlo such a success over the years.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
Please.
So I will make the motion, an enthusiastic motion to adopt proclamation number four of 2021, expressing appreciation and gratitude for Catherine Alloway's dedication and commitment to the Schlo Center Region Library.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, questions on this? Okay, hearing none, will all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried, okay. And then we're going to go into our COVID-19 Planning and Response section, and we will turn it over to Margaret for an update on the AMI testing site. Good morning, Margaret.
Morning, thanks very much. Since October 27th of 2020, the Center County Board of Commissioners has provided for a COVID-19 testing site here in Center County, which represents approximately 19 weeks or five months of COVID-19 testing for our residents here. During this period and through last Saturday, I can share with you that the AMI testing site, first at the Nittany Mall and then at the Comcast Building, has provided 12,567 COVID-19 tests to our residents. And of course, our contract, the county contract with AMI ends on the Saturday. However, you'll also recall that we were originally introduced to AMI back in early October, when the Department of Health provided a seven-day pop-up testing site in the county. And the Department of Health continued its contract with AMI, providing testing throughout the Commonwealth. And they do have the ability now to come back to Center County and will continue the testing site in Center County, starting next Tuesday for a period of five weeks. It will run from Tuesday, March 30th, through Saturday, May 1st. And they've planned this in collaboration and partnership with Center County in that they are keeping the exactly same schedule in place, a Tuesday-through-Saturday schedule, 10:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. The only difference being is a necessity to move the site. And we have identified and thank very much the Patton Township Municipal Government for offering their lower level of the Patton Township Municipal Building for this purpose, located at 100 Patton Plaza, just off of Valley Vista Drive, great access from Interstate 99. And it's a common landmark with the Home Depot and Lowe's being located so closely. It's a familiar location to people. So just wanted to thank everyone who's been involved with our AMI testing site. Special thanks to the Nittany Mall and to Robert Stewart, who's provided us with the Comcast Building for these past 10 weeks. And we will continue to be working with the Department of Health and AMI as they take this over, starting next Tuesday. Great news, we think testing is still important, even as more of our citizens are vaccinated. Testing is still an integral and important part of our COVID-19 mitigation approach. So that's the update, and we will be posting that information on our website later today. The Department of Health will also be issuing a statement tomorrow to provide more information. That's it.
Okay, fantastic, Margaret. This is, again, terrific news that we can still continue testing here in Center County. And the best part of this news is it's not, the county government is not bearing the cost, it's being done by the state. So this is just terrific news. Again, I think on behalf of all of us, a massive thank you to Patton Township. That's great news. Thank you for brokering that agreement, Margaret, and having them house this testing site. It's going to be really phenomenal. So great, thank you so much. Any other comments or questions on the news about five more testing here in Center County? Okay, hearing none, we will then, there's no action on this as well, Margaret, correct?
No action, just an update to make sure that everybody knows that the testing resource continues.
Fantastic, okay. All right, we're going to then move into our personnel items for today. And we have two items for Conservation District, and they are for anything, well, I should say, Jimmy, you're still with us, anything you'd like to add to either of these two positions?
Nope. I guess I would just add that this is a new position in the Conservation District, and it's a temporary one, it's for a summer intern. So I think what we're asking for is approval of the new job description and the personnel requisition for this position.
Okay. We would look for a motion for those two items. Is, let's see here. Looks like Commissioner Higgins might have gotten kicked out of the meeting. We'll give him a minute to maybe get back in. It looks like his laptop just restarted. We'll just give him a second here if we wanted to just pause. Well, actually, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, oh, there he is, great.
Sorry, my laptop spontaneously restarted again.
No worries, we are still with Jim, and we were, perfect timing, we were just about to look for a motion for the Conservation District items.
Oh, good. Is that what you're looking for at this point?
Oh, yes, please, please.
Okay, motion to approve the item for the Conservation District.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the job description and personnel requisition. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, okay. Best of luck with that position, Jim, we look forward to hearing how it goes.
Yes, thank you.
Take care. For the Correctional Facility, we have six items, and they are personnel requisitions for a, two part-time COs and three full-time COs, and also a full-time counselor at the Correctional Facility. And we will look for a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the six items for the Correctional Facility.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried, okay. For our Court Administration Office, Kendra, we will turn it over to you, our Court Administrator, to see if you have any comments on this item.
I don't have a lot of comments. Our Administrative Assistant, Kim Smeltzer, who's been with the county for several years, is retiring April 30th. So currently, her position handles the transcripts, dealing with senior judges, and some other matters that are handled here in Court Administration. But there were some things that we just wanted to add to the job description, just to make it a little bit more specific in the duties for that position.
Okay, sounds good, okay. Well, we wish Kim the best after the end of April. She worked for the Commissioner's Office for some time, so we thank her for her service. And we look forward to approving these job revisions or revisions to the job description. Is there a motion to approve those revisions?
Motion to approve the revisions to the job description for the position of Administrative Assistant, Court Administration.
Second.
All right, they've been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. For our Facilities Management Office, we are looking at a, let's see, we can do both, it looks like we can do both the Facilities Management and the MHID Office. We'd be looking for a personnel requisition for full-time custodial worker, and also personnel requisition for full-time caseworker two in the Mental Health Intellectual Disability Office. Is there a motion to approve those two items?
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time custodial worker one in Facilities Management and a full-time caseworker two for MHID.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. All right, for our Planning and Community Development Office item, we will turn it over to Ray Stalinas.
Thanks, Commissioners, good morning. We have a request for personnel requisition for the Senior Planner position. As you well know, Liz Los has been promoted to Assistant Director. We would like to replace her position and begin advertisements with the Pennsylvania Planning Association, PCAP, and on the county website.
Is there a motion, I'll ask it again, is there a motion, sorry?
Oh, yeah, sorry, you froze there, Mike, couldn't hear you. Motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time Senior Planner One in Planning.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, okay, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, for our Public Defender's Office, we'll turn it over to Dave Crowley, good morning, Dave.
Dave, you're muted, we can't hear you.
Oh, is that right? I'm on so many different platforms, I keep forgetting where the unmute button is. Ms. Tomlin is currently interning with us, she's a paralegal student at Harrisburg Mini College at the night school, and we'd be happy to make her position here full-time and paid. She's doing very, very well, it's our intern fitting right in, and hopefully she'll be with us for many years.
Fantastic, okay. Thank you, Dave, any questions for Dave? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment of Kelly Tomlin, a full-time Legal Secretary Two in the Public Defender's Office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much, enjoy your day.
You as well. Under Judicial Personnel Items, we do want to note that President Judge West has approved the personnel requisition for full-time Administrative Assistant in the Court Administration Office. Under Non-Personnel Items, we have two for probation, and we will turn it over to Director Ryan Smeltzer, good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, I have two items on the agenda today, one of them being is the annual agreement that needs signatures from you, and I believe the President Judge and myself, that we send to the probation and parole board so they can release our supervision fees that we collect. We anticipate about $325,000 that will be coming back to the county for that amount. And then the second item is grant and aid application. This is the first year it's changed, they're making us actually submit a grant. Before, it was more or less, we just provided in some statistics, and then they just would send the money back to us. Well, PCCD has taken over this, taken over this role, and they're requesting us to submit a grant and do a detailed budget, provide them a lot of statistics on a quarterly basis. So I need the signatures from you guys as well, so I can finish that grant application so we can bring in our annual grant and aid amount, which this year we're projected for $99,500. It is non-competitive, so we're already kind of allotted that money. The following year, it might be a little bit different because they're creating a funding formula across the board of the Commonwealth to determine what type of money we'll be receiving moving forward.
Okay, all right. And this is for 2021, or 2021, so this is the current fiscal year we're in. Any questions for Ryan? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the grant in aid application and the Supervision Fund Agreement to the Tuesday, March 30th Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, Ryan, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, under Planning and Community Development, we have two items, and we will turn it back to Ray for any initial conversation on this.
I believe Ann Mezner is on the meeting as well, and I think she's going to review both items to reflect some of the changes made with regards to how funding is going to be administered with both bridge bundles that are coming up from 2020.
Thank you, Ray.
Good morning, everyone. As you will recall, a couple weeks ago, the Commissioners passed resolutions to show the change of funding sources for the bridge bundles. So PennDOT is now asking for letter of amendments for each bridge bundle because they are tied to the agreements, the 18 and the 19 agreements. So they're trying to update those agreements and have requested that these letters be completed, they are due tomorrow. So I would appreciate if the Commissioners could approve this and sign, and the Chair sign the letters today.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Any questions, comments on these items?
These moving forward, and appreciate the staff's work to rearrange the funding sources based on some changes at the state level. So good, good to see we'll be able to fix this number of bridges. And obviously, as an example, the Borough of Belfont and the county were supposed to be paying roughly a half a million dollars for the railroad speed bridge there in Belfont Borough. The county's covering the overwhelming majority of that half million, but we do appreciate the contributions from both Belfont Borough and Howard Borough towards the repair of bridges in their areas.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, okay, all right, well said, Commissioner Higgins, we will then look for a motion to approve the letters.
Motion to approve the letters of agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through the Department of Transportation.
Second.
They've moved and seconded, any final discussion on that? None, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ann, appreciate it. All right, moving into the Commissioner's Office, we will, and we just want to remind everybody, if you're not on, if you're not speaking, to please mute yourself, okay, thank you so much. We have a, two items under the Commissioner's Office, we'll turn both of them over to Margaret.
All right, thanks very much. The first item is a lease payment to Robert Stewart, property owner of 1155 Benner Pike Suite 120, for 10 weeks, starting January 17th through March 28th, 2021, in the amount of $7,500 for lease of this space for the COVID-19 testing site.
Okay, and we would look for a motion for that.
I will make the motion to approve payment to Robert Stewart for the lease of 1155 Benner Pike Suite 120 in the amount of $7,500.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded, and we really appreciate Mr. Stewart being so able, so much able to get us into that space when we needed it a few months ago. In addition, Commissioner Dershowitz, thank you for linking us up so we were able to get in there. And this is certainly a very, he's very graciously allowed us to use the space, and this is a contribution as part of the money that we have to combat COVID-19, that we can offset his costs a bit. So again, thank you, everybody, for finalizing this, and we have the motion, we have the second, any final discussion?
I just want to say thank you to Robert, and thank you guys as well, and Margaret, for, I think this has really been a game changer for our community, making sure that we've had the testing available. And I think ultimately, it probably saved some lives and probably kept us even further off the COVID radar. So I just think it's a great thing to have these testing facilities so easily available.
I agree with Steve, yeah, thanks to, thanks to Robert, thanks to Margaret and her staff, and the people at AMI for running this so smoothly for five months.
Absolutely, absolutely, I concur with both my colleagues, thank you all. All right, we will, we have the motion, we have the second, and all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried, okay, great. And then we have our contract with Zelensky Axlerod to discuss as well.
Yes, this is a proposed contract with Zelenkovsky Axlerod, ZA, for the provision of accounting and consulting services related to the general administration of the various COVID-19-related federal and state grant funding programs that the county will be receiving. The specific deliverables that we would look for from ZA would be technical assistance and advice in administering these grant programs, billing would be structured on an hourly basis. We worked with ZA on the administration of the County Relief Block Grant, they were extremely helpful to us in the administration of the $14.7 million that we received under that particular grant. Given that the American Relief Program will be coming through, we believe the Department of Treasury, it's really important to have them on our team so that they can be sifting through a lot of the requirements and compliance items that are necessary for us to follow. So it is a similar contract to the one that we had with them for the County Relief Block Grant, and putting it out today for your consideration and discussion.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. And we don't, one of the points about the American Rescue Plan that was passed several weeks ago, that we still don't know about how we can use the approximately $31 million that we, Center County Government, ourselves will receive, is how much we can use for administrative costs. The assumption is that there would be some, some amount in there that we can use, and again, anything that we would pay or need a bill, ZA would need a bill to us, could be captured by those funds. So again, it wouldn't be using any county general fund money if we anticipate how this will go. But yeah, ZA was a great partner with the County Relief Block Grant in 2020, and just other things that might have come up as well with, during the COVID pandemic, from a financial perspective, the different grants we may have gotten, they were always there to really help us. And we had a certain amount budgeted for them, and they came in a lot under where we were expecting them to be. So it's a great partnership to lock down at this point, and as we go forward and get more guidance from US Treasury, they'll be in place to really help us out. So this, this sounds great, any, any other comments, thoughts?
Yeah, working with ZA during the last round of federal funding was really helpful, saved us a lot of time, and the fact that they were working with at least 20 other counties allowed them to do a lot of research and then spread that cost 20 different ways. So that was wonderful. Do have a question for Margaret, on the small chance that the current lawsuits against the American Rescue Plan succeed, and counties and municipalities don't receive the projected funding, we don't owe anything to ZA then?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Because I'm not, I'm not going to count our chickens on that one until that first tranche of money is actually in our checking account.
Okay, all right, any other questions, comments on this? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to add it to next week's consent agenda?
Motion to add the contract with ZALLC to the March 30th Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, okay, thank you again, Margaret. Under our Emergency Communications 911 items, we have two, and we will welcome in Norm.
Good morning, this is a contract change with Tyler Technology, changing our, basically our county contract with them for our computer aided dispatch, or CAD, to a regional CAD solution with Southern Alleghenese 911 Cooperative. This contract change is being funded through a Pima grant at no expenses from the county budget. The contract runs from March of this year to March 22, with a total cost of $141,281. We also requesting approval of the third-party associated hardware, software, and services from Tyler Technology for this regional CAD project. This one-time cost is $43,962, which is also funded from a Pima grant with no expenses coming from county budget.
Okay, thank you, Norm, any questions for Norm on these two items?
Quick question, Norm, I hope it's not too much in the weeds, but with this regional CAD project, are we going to clean up some of the issues we've had, where like there's a dry-run road in Center County, and then there's a dry-run road just a few miles away in Clinton County, is that what the regionalization is going to assist with?
It won't affect the Clinton County because it will not be tied to Clinton County. They're in a different region. Those should not be conflicts because they're driven by the street name and the municipality. So those, those should not be conflict as long as the street name is associated with the municipality.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on these two items? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to add the contract addendum and the third-party agreement with Tyler Technologies to the Tuesday, March 30th Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, Norm, thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, underneath our Information Technology Services, we have a few items here, and we'll turn it over to Chad for discussion. Hi, Chad, good morning.
Hello and good morning. The first item have is a letter of engagement, a memorandum of understanding, and a non-disclosure agreement with the Pennsylvania National Guard. What these will provide is for their cyber operations element to come on-site for a week in April and perform a comprehensive cybersecurity risk assessment. The MOU is for, to remain in effect for five years, so we could bring them back in future years, so we're able to see how we are progressing on our cybersecurity posture as we get better over the years. And these agreements are for no cost to the county or the National Guard to come in and perform this work.
Fantastic, fantastic, we were able to have a really nice presentation from you earlier in the week that talked about the various things that they would do and go through and work. that talked about the various things that they would do and go through and work. And, you know, we asked the question, if we weren't working with the Pennsylvania National Guard and their cybersecurity team, you know, what this kind of cost would be? And I think it's important just to note that because, you know, we're, we're saving a significant amount of money by going in this direction. So in terms of an estimate that you could potentially put on the scope of work that they're, they're saving us, Chad, where would you ballpark that?
I, I would estimate somewhere around $20,000 to $40,000, this type of comprehensive assessment where they're on site for an entire week and produce actionable items would, yeah, somewhere between $20,000 and $40,000.
And what that, I mean, from my perspective, what it ultimately does is that savings allows us, when they come back with recommendations, we could have put the money, we can put the money that we potentially could, would have got, had to use for bringing somebody like that in into some of the recommendations. So it's a fantastic, it's a fantastic service and, you know, many other municipalities in the county that have that type of cybersecurity need, I think is, you know, this could be utilized many times over here in our community. So thanks for bringing this in. This is, this is good stuff. Any other comments or questions on those three, three items for cybersecurity assessment?
I just want to say, Chad, that was a great meeting earlier, well-run. Appreciate your being proactive on this and saving us the money because we do know over the last two years, a broad variety of counties and municipalities nationwide have had significant cybersecurity events. Cross our fingers here. Center County hasn't had one, but the harder we make it for the, the bad people to get in, the more likely it is they'll, they'll try to, they'll move on to an easier target. So appreciate your help with this.
Welcome. Okay, any other discussion on those three items before we move into the contract? Go into that second item, then once we've concluded, we'll do one, one full motion. But Chad, we'll turn it back to you.
Okay. The, the next item is a, a contract to consider with Reclamier Data Security Experts to help me develop an information technology managed service provider request for proposal, which would be released later this year. The contract would be for $14,550 and it would run through the end of this year, December 31st, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Chad. We've worked with Reclamier in the past with a number of different projects. They've been very helpful. They're a local firm in central Pennsylvania, great resume. So it'll be excellent to have them on board to assist with the process. Fantastic.
Yes, we've been really happy with their work.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that item before we look for a motion for all, all four items? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the cybersecurity assessment, items one through three, and the contract with Reclamier Data Security Experts to the Tuesday, March 30th consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final, final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, thanks again, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, our next action or our next item here is the consent agenda. We look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
You're kind of freezing, Mike, but I think you want me to approve the consent agenda, right?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay. We'll move then into our letter of support consideration, and this is a letter of support for the Phillipsburg Revitalization Corporation applicant, application to the USDA. Very, pretty straightforward. Is there anything else we needed to discuss or add to this?
Just wanted to mention, of course, the commissioners are supportive of the revitalization of Phillipsburg and we are starting to see some forward motion on that. Also, I believe they're applying for the USDA grant maybe sooner rather than later. They're hoping we could send them the signed hard copy by email maybe by tomorrow.
Well, I think we have some things we need to sign coming out of today's meeting, so hopefully we could meet that deadline.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be in this afternoon.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other discussion on that letter? Okay, would there be a motion to approve the letter?
Motion to approve the letter in support of the Phillipsburg Revitalization Corporation's application to the USDA.
Second.
All right, to move that second, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, then our check run, we'll turn it to Commissioner Higgins.
Sure. Larger than average check run in the amount of $1,889,676.76, so a very patriotic check run number this morning. The check, checks of the week are to Community Services Group, Inc., six checks totaling $80,365.29 for a broad variety of human and social services that were delivered in January and February. We appreciate working with Community Services Group and all the work they do for the Center County community. So would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated March 19th.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right, we have one more discussion item today and it is on the FFCRA and COVID leave options. And Margaret, anything to add to this before we turn it over to Kristen?
No, just that this is a continuation of the former discussions that we've had related to this requirement and we're coming up on the March 31st deadline. It's important to consider this today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The Families First Corona Response Act and our COVID leave policy was elected to be extended through March 31st. The government stated that we, it was optional to do so moving forward after December 31st, when the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act was to be sunset. They have now extended it again under the American Rescue Plan Act. They're saying that the FFCRA can voluntarily be extended through September 30th with the caveat that it may become mandatory again at some point, depending on how things go. So it is the recommendation of a lot of the webinars I've been on to continue with the FFCRA for the time being in our leave. And again, we could choose, we can put on there September 30th or until decided by the county. We may at some point decide to sunset it earlier, but to continue as we have been. The only change that is required if you extend it is that you do have to allow that, that COVID medical leave that we provide when someone is diagnosed or quarantined, that we also allow them to use that type of time when going to get the vaccine or if they suffer symptoms upon getting the vaccine. So, you know, some people have like fever and chills and are sick the next day. We would allow them to use, if they have a reaction to the coronavirus vaccine, that they would be able to use the time for that too. That is a requirement that if you extend it, you do have to allow for that. So we're talking maybe a couple hours to get their shot, maybe a day or two if they have symptoms upon getting the shot. I haven't heard of people having multiple like weeks of symptoms, thankfully. So, but that is one thing if we do decide to extend it. So what I'm looking for is if the board would like to extend, continue to voluntarily extend this through September and we would update that policy accordingly.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Any questions about any other facets of what the extension would mean in terms of Center County?
So Kristen, it's, it's sounding pretty good to me. A, a number of my friends who have received their second shots are having noticeable symptoms for 24 to 48 hours. And I hear in some cases, it's more younger people with more active immune systems who have the more significant symptoms. So if they did, a day or two after getting the second shot feel just awful, then they, they could stay at home that day and take the day off.
Right. Where they could use it to, they could use COVID medical for a day or two to recover from that. I know both my parents had the shot. My mother had no reaction. My dad had full-on reaction for, like you said, 24 hours and then he was fine.
All right.
So it varies person to person.
Yeah, from my perspective, it does seem like it, it was a good policy to have in place in 2020 and going into 2021, it would be very beneficial. And with the American Rescue Plan funds that we do have available, we can use that to offset potentially any costs that we do see when individuals are needing to go for shots or if there are any days where they would need to, you know, call in because as the antibodies are building up, the body is sort of, you know, not feeling great. So yeah, I, I think it makes total sense and it's, it's also an incentive for individuals to go get the vaccine where they don't have to make the decision about not going to work and getting the vaccine. We would still compensate them. So I, yeah, I think, I, I have no issue with, with the extension until September 30th of this. And if there's any other concerns or questions, we could certainly talk about them. But if we don't have any other ones, we can look for a motion to do that extension. Any other questions on this? Thoughts? Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay, all right. We would then look, and Kristen, simply all we would need was be an extension of the FFCRA until September 30th.
Correct. I would just need an extension or a, a motion to approve the extension and update to the policy to match that extension date.
Okay. Would anybody like to make that a motion? We could just say we move what Kristen says, fine.
That's easy then. We move what Kristen said.
I will second the motion to move what Kristen said.
Okay, fantastic. Alrighty. And then it would essentially be retroactive, Kristen, how it, I just out of curiosity, because we've already had some people who have gotten shots in county government. How would it be retro? What would that look like?
Well, the extension would be as of April 1st.
Okay.
So it would start April 1st, because that's sort of how they wrote it, that it would be beginning April 1st once that, the prior one had ended. So it would start April 1st with that ability to use it to go get your vaccine to, for recovery and that.
Okay, so backward, going backwards, we wouldn't be looking at that. Okay, just April 1st to September 30th. Okay, all right, okay. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no CNET requests today to consider. Margaret, any executive sessions we need to report or hold?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
Thank you. Okay, we have some time now for questions from any of the press who are, have joined us today and we would be more than willing to entertain any. Feel free to mute yourself and we will answer the questions as they come in. Okay, hearing no questions at this time from members of the press. We will then look for a motion to adjourn and the time is 10:49.
Motion to adjourn at 10:49.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.